I will give Robert a good call.
Yeah. Can you shoot coffee attacks if you need the light, please? Sorry. You shoot coffee attacks. So here Robert is. Did you shoot coffee attacks? That would be more.
Nothing.
I think I got it. I walked the dog early. Guys, I saw the videos.
Didn't get out.
The end of it. And I don't. Quite enough sexy. It seems to be, from what I gathered, more counties than.
And Cabot, it's coming in, going to be here any moment.
Awesome.
Make sure you won't be offended if you start to intro the topic without him, but that is a future.
I guess we can start.
If you're ready, I'll start. I will close the doors because I guess.
Yeah.
The turbine will be super loud. Ready?
Yes.
So I'll call this meeting to order.
Let me do a roll call?
Yes.
Great. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss. Councilmember Coste is absent and Council President Matavetsky is here as an ex officio member. Representative John Zalek also present. Thank you.
Okay, so this is RL twenty four dash one fifty, one fifty, excuse me, an ordinance to amend the city charter to eliminate. As Director of Public Safety. And so. I know that when you came up, thank you first for putting in the legislation. We always like to hear like different ideas about people's thoughts and how to make the city better. One other thing. With this public safety, I'm this and also city manager. What type of qualifications do you think like saw a person of with the public director, public director of safety should have? And also, would it be like the chief, would there still be a chief also? Or like what, what were you thinking?
Well, my, my thoughts on it were, you know, you, you never hear, unless there's a terrible tragedy, which, you know, it's like once every twenty years or ten years. You never hear them, any mayor, not this mayor or any other mayor assert themselves as the Director of Public Safety. They always defer to the police chief. So you, you wonder who's in charge. So, and a lot of people. And a lot of people, I mean, it's not a subtlety or nuance. It's, it's actuality that you have this position. I saw the Director of Public Safety and that person is in charge. So I, I have yet to hear any mayor, I may be wrong, but even in like the American Civic Association. Say, you know, I'm in charge here, you know, this is, this is, this is what we're going to do. It's that it's always, well, the, the chief or the police are doing a great job. You know, so. That, that's it. Now, how much of an expenditure would you have to make to have a full time Director of Public Safety? I don't know. The county's got an emergency management director. This, this would be half the time really spent with grants. So, you know, human resource background, grant writing background. Keep in mind, if you say, well, they've got to have a law enforcement background. Keep in mind that IBM hired a guy, Lou Gersner. As Chairman of the Board that was with RGR in Abisco. He didn't know computers from a cookie. And he, he saved IBM. IBM was twelve weeks away from running out of payroll worldwide. So, so. To have the Director of Public Safety. Which is allocating human resources. Getting in the transfer payments. Accountability when there's a tragedy, but just everyday accountability, you know, what went on in the weekend. For some reason. We don't have a police blotter like we used to have, you know, nobody, nobody knows what, what's happening in the city unless they care to, to release it. So this is, this is the communication that I think you need. And I think you need a seasoned person because what I would be curious to know, and I don't know it. How many people say over forty two or forty three years old are with the police department right now? You, you know what I mean? I mean, the, the imbalance between experience and. Novices is, is, is that, that gap is huge now. Never used to be that way. So. You need someone that has the ability to say the buck stops with me, that the public can have confidence either way.
And how, and so how you're saying that, so would it, should it be like a vote? Or like we, it would be like a higher that process, like they would go through the clerk's office.
Yeah.
Like just an example of like how like they would go through the clerks or like would we have to like vote them in like how, like what were your ideas on that?
Well, you would, after you eliminated this, you would establish the director politic, it's already established, you would carry it forward. To a paid position which would be appointed by city council. And, you know. So it would be, I mean, I, I don't know the legalities of calling someone with police commissioner. You know, I don't know, know that, but that's, that's in essence what it would be.
So it's so base, so basically, is it like higher than the chief or on the same level?
No, you, in my way of thinking, he would be the chief's boss, yeah. He wouldn't do the micromanagement, the, the call of make the law enforcement calls, but, you know. I mean, just like in, in, you know, for, New York is a bad example, but, you know, police commissioner. All the way down the chain, but, you know. But, I mean. What this does, I think it, it. Rather than go around the same old ugly grounds with, you know, irate citizens, the police chief this, the police chief that versus back the blue. You know, you get, you get someone in there that is. That is.
Neutral.
Not involved in.
Politics.
Yeah, yeah. Mayor of politics, not involved in police unions. I mean, you've just got too much of that in this town. I mean, it's. I, I, I think a certain amount might be unescapable, but I don't, I don't see it like example, I don't see it in Anytown, Johnson City. Or in Vestal where the police. Play an activist role on who's going to be mayor, who's going to be on the town board. I, I don't see it there. I see here.
So just like a separate non-political.
Well, it's political in the sense that council would appoint it, you know, unless you want it, I mean, I guess you gotta have a job description. Although it's not. It's just, just the word Director of Public Safety. There's not much of a job description in the charter.
Did we determine that this was, this would be another referendum?
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Both of them.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's my point of it is, is that. Your, your only, your only decision is to let the people decide. So it's not, it's not, and, and again, the, these are not, both of these issues are not radical proposals. They're, they're, they have, they're already in play, already in practice. So, you know, this is not, this is not somebody wanting to burn the house down. You know, this is, this is better management. And I, I, to tell you the truth, between the. You know, you hear the term moving forward. Well, between the compression of the national political agenda. And running this city. You know, you're, you're always in, in locked up here and that, that's not the way it should be. It, it, at some point it has to be, be broken. I mean, because these things are, are manufactured. Differences that, you know, just are, just designed to push buttons. And I, you know, I, now. You gotta say, well, what would be so, why would Binghamton be so different that things that were elsewhere couldn't be applied here? That, that's, that's the other thing. Are, are we just, you know, is, are we just? Trying to create this never ending chain of really what has been failure? I mean, I hate to tell you.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I mean, think about it. I mean, from the council's perspective. Let's take this council compared to like a council in nineteen seventy. You know, the council had charge of the hospital, council had charge of the school district. Yeah. It, the city was. Hundred percent born population, you know, thereabouts. So, as, as the responsibilities of the council and the city have dwindled. The cities didn't get better. I mean, there's that less to manage. And the city's getting worse, you know, so I don't know. Maybe we gave up the two product centers in this district and the, the hospital.
Just to give you some background, Councilman Hotchkiss, anything that restrains an elected official's powers in any way requires a refer.
Yeah.
Even if it's.
That part I should.
An elected official. So you're replacing the mayor as Director of Public Safety, potentially, that's the RL. Because you're constraining the mayor's powers. That's why it would require a refer.
And, and one more thing on the referendum. I'm not so sure it has to be in a November or a primary election. Because when I drive through Lansing and I drive through all these towns in New York State, you see these signs, vote this way, vote that way. On all these town referendums and they don't really line up with the general or that sometimes they line up with the primary. So I'm, I'm not so sure that, that it has to be on a November ballot. Well, yeah, I know that. Yeah, I know that. Yeah. But not having an election could be expensive too. Some guy can get in there and cost you a lot of money to win elections.
Does anybody have any other questions regarding that?
Um, not, not. Not there.
Yeah.
So. Police Commissioner, Fire Commissioner, who's the fire? Police and Fire are. We trying to oversee over the chiefs, W A C on both?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're, we're. Getting a, a professional manager to allocate the resources to get the grants and to, to do all that. We're letting law enforcement. Do what they have to do with the accountability that the Director of Public Safety. Is, is, is looking over them at all times.
Does it now?
He just.
The mayor.
Automatically given that.
Yeah, I know that. But I mean, like who like looks for the grants and does all that? Like he has someone that he doesn't.
Police Department does. Police Department. I mean, he has assistants that have grant writing experience that I believe relies on.
But aren't those people usually, the assistants are usually employed by. Police Department or even Fire.
No, directly within the mayor's office.
What power does a public safety? Because I mean, or in other words, if. For the fire commissioner and police, what power do they have to do their whole aspect of, you say accountability? Do they hold a, a power or a right to fire police or fire?
No, unions.
Yeah.
That's union.
Still union.
That's going to be pretty inescapable.
But for example, in the role of a public safety officer, the mayor determines what is in the annual report from the chief. From the police department. So. I, I know this because we were discussing the ATV data and how we might align it into the annual report that the mayor gets. So. The public safety officer, one of the things that they do is determine what is reported on. In a formal capacity in, or more than annually, if they want more frequent reporting. Just to give an example of what. A public safety officer might do.
So another, another layer of this is to, I think, look at. All right. Cities with city manager form of government. Do they have a separate? Director of Public Safety or does that tend to go with the city manager's office? Was, I mean, there's a lot of permutations of. How the city government can work. If we really fundamentally think about changing. What we do in Binghamton and I think we need some, some more comps, some more, see what's going on elsewhere. I know we've got Ithaca as a, as kind of a. I don't want to say experiment in progress, but work in progress.
I mean, there's the, like most of the West Coast.
Right. And many younger municipalities, many Western municipalities have went, just went with city manager.
I, I think I mentioned to you that I was speaking in a, a university class remotely in Texas and the professor told me. He looks at the form of government to see if it's a manager, city manager, strong council, form of government before deciding where to take, where to go for, to move. Based on his.
And why is that?
There's just veteran cities.
Oh, thank you. I like that. We'll talk about that in a minute.
Yeah.
Again, that's awesome.
Anybody else have any other questions for me?
I, I can't remember if you had any. City comparable cities. That have this.
Yeah. The New York State did. I'll, I'll, they get up again and.
Okay.
Send it up.
Yeah.
There's.
Please.
Yeah.
Alani has been talking about this from pretty much day one.
Well, not the public safety part.
Yeah. Yeah, the city manager is a more. Common problem. I don't know if I've heard about this.
Do you guys want to move to the next trial?
Well. I think we're bleeding over to it anyway.
Okay, yeah. I'll just introduce it again. Um, RL twenty four dash one fifty one. It's an ordinance to amend the city of, city of Binghamton Charter to a city manager council form of government. So, one of the questions I had with this, John, is how could we implement this without being politically biased? So that's, I think that's one of my main concerns because.
Maybe most of us.
Yeah. So, um, you know, right now it's a democratic council, but we're not sure what's going to happen in the next. Come, you know, come around, it might be a Republican led council. So like how, like, do you have any ideas of how this could be implemented without being politically biased?
Well, the. The only people. That would be interested in the preservation. Of the mayor's office, that is currently structured, are people that want to run for mayor, probably, you know what I mean? You know. Because as, as far as experience goes, you know, you, you'll get a nice big resume or TV. The candidates will lay it on the table and then you check their references and either they're, they're what they say they are or they're not. And either they have the ability to execute. Think, see, I think what's happened in Binghamton is, well, I know what's happening in Binghamton, is one mayor stuck with the other mayor's mistakes. And, you know, you can go back dated from urban renewal and. You know, they, they, they try the best they can. And. You know, this idea that experience, well, you know, one guy runs for mayor, I have the experience of the guy. Well, you'll get an experienced guy. So that's off the page, you know, as city manager. The thing that I wouldn't do. Is I wouldn't talk it to death. I wouldn't focus. I would do what you have to do legally required to get it on the ballot. And then if it passes, you can take that time and energy. Into the execution of, you know. If you spend too much preliminary time, if it turns into like a dog and pony show and everything, you know, it was like terminus, it's the same deal. Where, you know, you can't have terminus, you can entertain the possibility of terminus. They won't pass and it passed the one. So, so that would be, that would be the. Idea behind it. I mean, there's. There's a shortage of people that want to run for mayor. And have the money to, I mean, I know Jared borrowed fifty thousand with his mom, I think it was. You know, to run for mayor. So there's, there's a shortage of, of money and people. That think there's other qualified people that would love to run the mayor and would do, do a darn good job, but they're not going to put themselves out there. I'm not knocking on doors or anything, but they're not going to put themselves out there because they don't need the tension and, and the thing, but I. You know, I, if you. Look at the school system and the superintendent, there's a good example. The superintendent serves at the pleasure of the board. The board hires a superintendent, you know, this, this is essentially the same deal. The guy will have a contract and, or the lady. And. You know, I mean, I, I just don't see why, why we're stuck with this. And there's no but. I mean. To be honest with you, the last mayor election was, was a complete farce in terms of the over involvement of, of the police unit. An absolute travesty in my opinion, you know, where, 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 where the police department is going. I told you this. Guy got up and scrat and said. And they were talking about the city as a whole. And he said, you know, are there really that many retired school teachers and retired law enforcement that this city is totally in that direction and not in? And, and it's like here, you know, we got forty five thousand residents, most of them, if the university closed up tomorrow, most of them wouldn't be affected. And I have anything. I'm here for the, I am, I identify with the residents. I don't care how long they've been here. You know, but there's people that have ten years, twenty years. All their lives. So, that's, that's what I'm trying to, to get to here. I'm not trying to, to preserve this aristocracy that we have. It's failed. It's failed.
Besides, like the political element, which I think is valid, I think the, the part that I looked up. That's like easy to remember is it's, it's studied indicated that the governments with like the city manager style are ten percent more efficient. And it's just like if anybody could make the promise of delivering like ten percent more efficiency in anything, it's like. Let alone like a city government. That's, that's a huge victory. So I thought that was really compelling. I, I obviously need to do. More research than that, but it seems like everything. I've read so far, it's positive. And I understand it better, like the, the school board is a good example or the other analogy. So it was like the nonprofit board, the executive director answering correctly to the board. But it seems. It seems compelling enough to like have a harder look at. It seems like there's more. Cities converting to city manager and I don't know if there's cities leaving city manager to go towards mayor council.
There are some that are considered, yes. And that's for the kind of like the letter that you have. The idea that some residents in communities with council plus city manager feel frustrated that. The person that's in charge is not an elected person. Right? So it feels on, for. For some people, they feel like it feels undemocratic. They'd like to vote for the person that they perceive as the top. Directly as opposed to through voting for city council and the city. So, so there definitely are cities that are looking at the other direction. The other thing that I came across when discussing with various councils. Now I'm going to blink. It's the ability to change. So. One. In Colorado that I was talking to. You know, they've had the same city manager for twenty some years. It provides a lot of stability. Overall, I think. Like the council member I talked to there liked it, but she did mention that it doesn't. If you want to do any sort of larger change. It's hard to. Move. The sys, the system becomes less movable was her perspective. It's more. Entrenched. You don't have kind of the political headwinds going this way and that way. You kind of have a. That, that was her perspective on it was that it was more kind of locked in and that you weren't going to do. Kind of big changes.
Is this more for the elected, having the elected?
Because you have this, you get dependent on a city manager that you're paying and they have their expertise. The elected officials are not as. Necessarily experienced in that line of thing. And you get dependent on somebody who's coming in with a particular knowledge and. Things aren't, aren't, and they've been there for twenty years. They're not, it's not the same as the kind of the churn that you have. Where you have mayor and council. Kind of doing a dance and the party shifting back and forth and new ideas coming in and out.
An outside person is not a likely, a person who actually has, have had experience ready management. So sometimes this might not be, you might not be looking in-house in the state. You might have to action.
So Ithaca did hire a former mayor. So Ithaca's city managers are former mayors, my understanding. So. A former mayor from fucking the. A council, yeah. That, that was my understanding on it. Maybe I got it wrong, but my understanding is that they hired a former. Mayor of Ithaca as their city manager who had the credentials and the experience of being mayor in the previous form of government.
I don't know if that would work for us because, I mean, the honest, not all the mayors were all that great. So.
I'm just, I'm just trying to throw out some of the.
If it could, but still that involves a certain.
Current city chief of staff and longtime common counsel.
Oh, was it past council, council member? Sorry. Past council member, not past. But they were a past elected, elected official. Thank you for correcting.
No problem.
But having.
No, no, no.
Even if having an elected, an elected, former elected official. It still feels like there's a question of why, aspect of having somebody being influenced by someone. At one point. I don't want any, what I want is somebody. Nonpartician. That's, I mean, I don't want anybody in it to be Republican or. Put it this way, they're political. They choose to have whatever political side they, for their agenda, but mostly it's, I want this person to be a person. That is working for the city, is for the city. And understands what needs to be done for the city as opposed to what a political party would, would have to model the process.
So, so then basically what you're, what we're saying is that the mayor's role would be a ceremonial thing?
Yeah, it would be mostly ceremonial.
In some places. In charge of the budget, like the city manager.
In some areas, I believe the mayor is just the council president. They're, the council, like.
Whoever's president of city council is the mayor.
Is the mayor for ceremonial things. And. In some places, while the, most of the council is part-time, the person who's elected mayor or president of the city council. Would be the person who is full-time. So they're doing ceremonial stuff as well as council stuff. And, and. That's one model. There's obviously lots of models.
Well, you know, if you look at the social media pages of a mayor or any public. That, that gives you a clue, not only on their timeline of what they're doing every vote, but what they consider to be important. And. What's left out is the real nuts and bolts of the city. And you know, I mean, if you, if you go to a board of directors, be say for a company, you know, produces tools or whatever, you know, sales up, sales down. Advertising it, you know, we're doing this, we're getting sued here. You know, sales up, sales down, advertising it, you know, we're doing this, we're getting sued here, uh, there's not, there's not a lot of that, there's, there's. No nuts and bolts, it's us smiling and shoe shines and this development and that development, you know. It's, if that's what's on their mind, on the social media page, then we're, we're in for continued trouble.
Don't agree with the fact, I mean, like, just want somebody nonpartisan, in a sense, ideally, putting the forefront of the city. As something is, is more important than whatever political party they're. Cause even if you have somebody Republican, they have that mindset of doing so, that's what they work, they're for that. But unfortunately, um, a Republican party is not that great with how they're doing things now, but. I I feel the ceremonial aspect of the mayor and. North City Council and City Management is the best way to go. And the fact it's much more efficient, I, I don't know, people get tired of me talking about it here, because I'm from. From a different place where that does work, it would be having a city manager actually does work and working with the council. And and by having, things do get moved, things do change, um, and is more, it seems to be more apparent. From where, from when I, from my hometown, so that's why. That's why when I knew all this in the beginning, when February, that I've been, like, this is something I need, cause this makes no sense. I never, and I've said this before, I've never seen a city work. It's like for a city to be broken for to be to work, I've never seen that until now, being here.
But what about some people who say, if it isn't broke, don't fix it?
Because those are the ones that hold the power, those are the ones that hold the coffers, that's the reason, and that's the whole point, cause whenever it works for them. It don't work for the rest of the people who actually live it, it works for them, it don't work for anybody else.
And that, well, same thing was said about terminals, you know, oh, there's an election, you know, there's a, you know, because one guy wanted more than three terms. Uh, the Albany mayor, I forgot his name, Corning was it, he was in there for like life, you know, so that's, that's, so. People don't want this change, but uh, I don't know how many people don't want this change, I think it's a very narrow group. That, just like with terminals, that will be very vocal, and they'll write letters to the newspaper, or whatever, there's still a newspaper. You know, uh, but that, you, you know, that's, that's, that's their agenda, I mean, at the end, you, you need someone that. You know, you hear about that, well, we got a hundred million dollar, hundred twenty-five million dollar enterprise here, you need someone on that level that can run them. You, you certainly don't want somebody that, you know, wouldn't get an entry level positions, you know, in a, in a smaller enterprise.
This is also a way to to pick up how this works for city hall. With all the things that we have going on in the city hall, and that is, it's. Efficient, man, this would be very helpful to have someone to help manage and make sure that these things are. Direct and working with the control and doing these things, is, um. I don't. I just want this to work, I want, I want all this to work, and I just want city hall. And the government to work, and it hasn't been working, it hasn't been working for the past twenty years that I lived here. And so, and then there's other people noticing, and she always a change of hands, and somebody is. Trying to correct it, personally, it's so like, and it never gets done, nothing gets done, nothing gets done. Well, it's only pity, this. It's just not anything that's. We try to look at what we're doing right now, look at what we're doing right now, we have a, since day one, day one. We have been in conflict with the main thing one. And this doesn't make any sense, we have a conflict, we've been putting in legislation in, that we're trying to achieve, and then yet. We get vetoed on the things that seems the right thing to do. We need to do right by the people. Not right by the mayor, like he brought along with Luigi, who he holds his allegiance to.
Beauty of having to be a referendum, it's like we wouldn't be really deciding, and people are.
So what is the next step?
Do some more research and then come back for maybe another one more before we decide to like vote on it, I think.
Well, I mean, the, the first question would be, as John pointed out, when can referendums happen in the city of Bingham? Can it just be, it doesn't, must, must it be a general election? Or can it be a different election or especially?
I can certainly look into. Possibility, and then you guys can decide if it's.
If it's a general election, we've already timed out for this year, so we have time for to do whatever. If it's a, it can be a special election or primary or what have you, then that opens up the possibility of moving faster.
I I will get to that with Corporation Council, no, no problem.
One article I think I read was that like the referendum for Ithaca passed like three years before the person got in. So it was like, even if the referendum passes, um, they have a long time to. Work out nuts and bolts.
Yeah, I imagine that's to be termed with the mayor's term or something like that, yeah.
Maybe they take that into their. Yeah, and the other thing I was gonna say, there's like organizations out there that are just like very pro city manager, so you can reach out to them, it's like, do you want? Or think you wanna, are you gonna engage citizens in the things that this is good for your city, this is how you like get it done? Uh, so I would, I'm, I'm interested in reaching out to see like what they have to offer.
Do you think someone might be willing to come and speak via meeting or something at a council meeting?
Would also be beneficial than that, to seek someone outside of New York State.
I think the organizations are probably nationwide.
That's, that's what it seems, is a nationwide open. Oh, we'll see what they, what they offer, no, can't remember the name, but it's just some acronym.
You, you mean the New York Conference of Mayors?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I'd be interested in seeing just like a nice comprehensive list of all the different models.
Who, I guess, I'll be.
All in one place.
Yeah, the first step, I think we'll figure out the, we'll figure out exactly regarding the referendum situation. And then after that, we can um, start to do our research search and then have another committee meeting. Um, once we know like what the timeline is on this, and then after that, we can have another committee meeting, and then if we feel forced, then bring it.
Alrighty, sounds like a plan.
I'll leave you with this, the immortal words of the last congressman, and it was from the city of Binghamton, Edwin Arthur Hall. City council is where the action is, and that's after he was in the chamber with Roosevelt declaring war in nineteen forty-one. So, the change is here, it's not over there.
And um, Sophie should be on the way to the following discussion.
Okay. It wasn't bad. Yeah, because. Yeah, there's nothing bad, they said, someone asked me a question to tell everybody, so just had to, well, I remember, but I'm gonna write it down. It's not about, it's not political or anything. No, I'll write it, it's just the bad, it was not, it's nothing bad, it's just, no.
So Nate, are you taking lead on bringing more information or setting up the speaker and or setting up the?
I can, I can help with that too, like I don't want you to, I can.
I just don't, I don't wanna like leave and then.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Oh, oh, CC you on an email, probably.
That's fine, yeah.
Just follow up information for the next meeting on this topic.
Yeah, so.
Cause I didn't wanna leave, and then nobody is actually taking an action item. And then everyone thinks everyone else is doing something.
Um, yeah.
It sounded like from the meeting that Nate was willing to take leave, so I wanted to make sure that that was the.
Fine, I can.
Agreed understanding.
Here's that, can you discuss that around?
Oh.
It's kind of especially you.
I didn't hire us to do for anything because of child care and stuff. I got the.
Hey, or would you like us, wherever.
Sarah's. Um, this is Sarah, so there's one at the end, and there's one over here.
Well, it's kind of weird maybe that they're separated.
Did you guys want to, Nate can come down here?
Yeah, just sit here.
Now that you've gotten up, you know. Thank you, it was up all day. Is that your daughter?
Yes, my little chunk, she's so annoying.
Where did Barbara?
I have to head out in like five to ten minutes for.
This meeting has a, has a deadline of twenty minutes anyway.
Yeah. Do you wanna start, do you wanna start like with even the rapper?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just, um, basically a discussion regarding the rental registry. And um, it just like talking to people, kind of, different places, uh, they, they were talking about. I think, I don't know if you saw this, it's from Albany, Albany.
I did not see that.
I'll show you guys, they're kind of, that's just the form that they have, and I think it's just kind of.
That's a description.
Yeah, just kind of a description of what. Kind of like a form that they have for. I have the other, but, um, so it just like brought up, you know, like my brain, like you don't have one, but um, we do have. But um, I just had a few questions, and I think you already got them already, like, um, I think one of them is like, we have one, but why did we stop enforcing it? Is it?
So I think, I think the main roadblock, and to correct me if I'm wrong, has been manpower.
Okay.
Um, from what I understand, um, I had a conversation with my predecessor, because. Uh, this was enacted back in two thousand thirteen, and I think it was always like a budgetary manpower issue. Um, and that would also be twofold, right, so not only a budget for additional manpower to enforce the. Registration, inspection, field complaints, stuff like that, but also finding people to fill those positions. Cause we have a number of unfilled positions at the city already, so I think that was the first stumbling block, and from what I understand. In two thousand thirteen, this was passed knowing that that would be the major hindrance, it was passed anyway, and then there was never a provision made to. Kind of fill that funding gap. Um, the second that there are, um, you know, some legal concerns, and I would need, I just got the questions yesterday morning, so I would need a little more time to kind of flesh out. Um, but the main part of appeals case on rental registry is centers around, um, kind of. Signing off on preemptive warrantless searches. So that was the main, the main legal issue that there's been a lot of case. So we'd wanna comb through our existing law, make sure it was compliant with, that case was back in, I think, the eighties, so. The last thirty-five years.
So what about like health departments going into restaurants, like those, that's a preemptive warrantless search, right? They're going in, they're inspecting.
I don't know what their regulations are, I haven't.
I'm, I'm just, it seems similar, right?
Yeah, I'm just.
Seeking a license to.
License to rent, do we have to make it a license to rent?
And I can send everybody the cases that I've been able to pull in the last day or so.
That'd be great.
You guys can take a look at those, um, so I think it's kind of a twofold issue, is is legal compliance, but also manpower, I mean. Tito, I don't.
Yeah, no, that's.
Beats on this more than me.
That's what saying, I've heard you saying, that's, it's a personnel issue that I think, um. Chris Schleider was asked.
I was gonna say, it's Chris the better person to have any.
While he was asked, I don't remember when, a couple of years ago, and he looked into it, he found that he would need to double his staff. To be able to manage a program similar to what Rochester is doing, but on, on a smaller scale. A scaled debate, and, um, and that, that's a challenge, obviously, in terms of salaries, benefits, but also just filling the positions. Um, and.
I'm sorry, Tito, I didn't wanna suggest something that is available now, though, um, there is, code does offer a preoccupancy inspection. So if someone is moving into a location and they wanna make sure that it's compliant, or they want. Kind of a baseline to make sure they get their security deposit back or whatever, I mean, code offers those to make sure that, uh, wherever you're going into. Um, does not have existing code issues or condemnation issues or whatever, that's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, tenants can request, we often do say inspections, they, they don't always do that, but, but, but. Which goes to that, if they don't always do that, so, you don't always do that, that doesn't help out the situation.
Well, I think citizens don't always know that they can request that, so I think getting word out that. You know, we wanna make, we wanted, the city wants to make sure that people aren't living in, uh, you know, unsafe or condemned factories too. You know, that, that was kind of how Tito and I got asked down here today, is that, that concern has come out internally. In city hall, we wanna make sure the people are safe, you know, and not living in condemned building either, so I mean, Tito and Greg, you all are. zoning officer are great resources for that as well.
If manpower is a problem, and having somebody to come and look at apartments, and people find out. That wouldn't that be still an issue of manpower? I, I mean, it could, it could jam them up a little bit, but the reality is they're requiring it for every rental property.
Every three years.
It's still gonna be more, more taxing than than it being done by a question, just so it gets done every three years.
Well, that's what the law says, but of course, we could change that and make it every five years, to make it less intensive.
And I could give it, given that's a major undertaking, it constantly is the clerks registering everybody, people coming forward to register, it might be worth. Speaking to a jurisdiction that has successfully enacted this and is doing it like Syracuse or Albany, you know, and kind of taking a page out of their book about how they. Brought this from, you know, genesis to practice kind of thing.
I have two questions in, uh, all of the registration information gathering aspect of this, not the inspection portion. But all the information gathering and stuff, we're, we're probably a dozen years past when this was first considered. How much is all of that effort buying at this point compared to what we already have access to? In current databases and 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 what have you, I mean, we're pretty good at finding owners, we're pretty good at filling people for things, we're pretty, I mean. How much more information is all of this actually gathering, or is it just replicating stuff we already have access to, and then, um. That, second question, right, I had, what was my second question, uh, go ahead and answer my first question.
I mean. I think it could yield useful information, sometimes, you know, with LLCs, we don't know who the principles are. And we have to figure that out after the fact, if there's some kind of enforcement action taken, or they have to go to court, just to get that information upfront.
So, I mean, like that, right? New York is at least now requiring disclosure of names and of LLC owners uh, for property sales. But I don't know, I mean, there may be pushback, I, I, there may be legal questions about, I mean, disclosing home addresses and and business phone numbers and stuff, and home and business photos, that's called doxing now, right, like. I don't know. You know, concerned, um. Still have my second question, sorry.
I was wondering, um, how many code reports per year are from rental properties, because if there's a lot of them that would have just been caught in the, this process rather than having to be reactive, then it's always better to schedule work rather than react. So that would be one question, and then the other was, um, how many fires are in rental properties per year, because obviously part of this is fire code, um, which building fires and stuff costs us money and legal stuff and all that.
My other question.
Yes.
Was dovetailing with the lead registry thing?
Yes.
Um, may or may not be coming down the pipe.
It, it is from my check in.
I taken said they might not be funding.
Oh, interesting. So did they, I know that I did an introduction to one of the members of your office, um, have you been in communication with the county health department on the lead rental registry?
I have. We could certainly look into whatever question you have.
I made the connection with your code attorney. Months ago.
Is that, that's a state effort, if I'm correct, that's focusing.
And it's. Yeah. Area codes, and they were hoping to shrink it just to the west side of these.
Heat maps of.
Yes, led. Based on testing on children.
That's another thing to consider dovetailing with.
Right.
Our general.
And they were notified of the meeting, I did reach out to the health department to let them know we're discussing this.
So it was a state or a county?
So the state, working with the county health.
There's certainly a lot of information and a lot of available programs, and I just think it depends on what you want to accomplish. And then once we know kind of what the goal is, I think it's, you know, creating some sort of link between the mayor's office, council, potentially the county, you know, depending on, again, what you guys wanna accomplish, how you wanna see things go, I mean, it could start small, it could take time to research and do a once in, do it right kind of thing, depending on the scope of what you're looking at.
And you said that, um, I know Albany, so I'm gonna dig some more into Albany's rental registration. And then Syracuse, you said was another one?
And in Rochester.
In Rochester.
Basically, everyone.
Are they doing inspections at this, at this rate?
Buffalo does have inspections as part of their program. I did see that they have, they seem to have a rental registration office. So they have a separate department.
Albany was every three years, you said? Does anyone have a sense of how long an inspection would actually take, I know it would vary to some degree depending on the condition of the building and how long someone would actually have to inspect it, because fifty, fifty dollars seems maybe a little small.
For a rental registry inspection?
Yeah.
I mean, again, I think I would go back to the jurisdictions that have the rental registry, and maybe have a conversation with them about where they got the program from, what their legislation looks like, how it was implemented, their budget, how many officers they have, I mean.
Is there any history on this law, maybe that's a clear question for, um, because this was pre videos. Like, yeah, if there's any minutes that would say like what they were looking at. Minutes are, I know minutes are.
To look into it and produce whatever might.
Was documented, yeah.
I don't know currently what is documented around that.
But there's probably audio.
Yeah. The audio will be very hard to track, though. So, but I'm, I will definitely find whatever.
Yeah, no, I'm just kind of curious what the.
My, my understanding, um, at least about Syracuse's program, whether it's I don't, can't remember if it's registered or licensing, is that it's uh. They have it, but there's no way to like force someone to register, so it's like it's beneficial for the people that are allow allow for the inspection, and I think it like looks good for them to have that inspection, because they can show it to a tenant, like put it around like on the good, good landlord list, um, so I think part of this is uh also like incentivizing getting your properties like registered. Whether, so I think there's like a, you could do like a carrot on the stick, where it's like, okay, this is like this is an A plus landlord, and then there's like the opposite of that, is like this is the guy who has the most outstanding code violations of the city that not becomes the other, other motivator, I think. The one that I saw in Minneapolis that have like a really comprehensive like database that like tracks. It gives like the landlords a score, so if you're like looking to rent at a place, you can like look them up, and then it was really, it was really visually appealing, but um, it's a lot of data management. But that's, that's kind of what, in an ideal world, if you get there, so I think it's like, it's gonna be, it would be a heavy lift to get to that. Like visualization off the bat, I think the, the first part would be starting to get people registered. What we have. But even, even with the lack of people like just showing up to get things registered, the it's positive, um, having landlords. On that, on that register, that's, that's my understanding, even if it's like you only have ten percent people like showing up to do it, it's still it's still a full board. Residents or the courts.
Any idea how many city issues a year, and how many buildings?
How many?
How many are the city typically issue a year, or how many, how many representatives of cities buildings have been issued within the last five years or ten years?
They usually do that upon request, a lot of times it's part of, um, a real estate transaction, yeah. Uh, we can find that number.
I'm just wondering how big the job is initially, yeah.
I, I, we asked uh, BCGIS to give us the number of properties where the property owner has a mailing address that is not the property itself, just to get like a rough number of how many rentals we think we have, and it's a little over forty one hundred. I mean, it's a big margin of error there probably, but that's, it's a couple thousand that we get, turns a number of rentals. Rental progress, and then each property might have multiple.
I guess, like, I guess we'll, um, just follow up, I guess, on those questions, and then we have, when we come back with our findings, we'll meet again.
Would you like to adjourn the meeting? End it without you saying it aloud.
I'd like to call this meeting.
Adjourned.
Adjourned. So, Tito, I, I know that Sarah had said.